Welcome. This is Just Thinking, and I'm Mary Greendale. And today's topic is the town meeting warrant. It feels like we just did one of these the day before yesterday, but that's not the case. Here it is several months later. October 18th is the next town meeting. We have the warrant and draft form at this point. Some of these pieces have not been nailed down completely. We will try to tighten that up toward the end, but all of the information will become available online through the town's website, and you won't miss a thing if you go there. We'll give you some details about that as we go along. So with me are Tina Heine, who is the chair of the Select Board this year. Hi, Tina.
Morning.
And Travis Ahern. And Travis, last time, Travis is the town administrator. I think when we've done this before, we had masks on. This might be the first time anybody has seen you on Just Thinking without, there we go. So this is Travis. This is Travis. How are you?
Thank you for having me. Very good.
Good? Yeah. We were just talking about Travis having his little kids at Celebrate Holliston. Seems it was a hit with them, and that's always good.
They did enjoy it.
Yeah. All right. So town meeting, our fall town meeting is on October 18th, which is a little earlier. We changed, by bylaw, we changed it this last May to avoid all of the confusion that we always had with Halloween. So at any rate, so it's October 18th. And we're just going to jump in. Some of these articles are rather routine. Let's start with those first few. We've got the general stabilization fund, the pension stabilization fund. Let's just do those two for the moment. Those are basically savings accounts?
They are, and so I think you could probably group in the capital expenditure fund as well into a similar, right? It's for a purpose of capital, but those are the funds. And generally, we're funding at the fall town meeting, special town meeting, through free cash, which is a number we get certified by the state Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, we refer to as DLS. That number last year was certified on September 25th, so we're just about there. Everything is into the state. We're waiting on that number, and that will really dictate these articles and where we're going to divvy up and make sure our savings accounts are in line with our financial policies.
What is free cash? There is no such thing.
No. It's, so it's our unassigned fund balance at the end of the year that gets certified by the state to say this is the amount of money that is unencumbered. It is essentially any spending, actual spending below what we budgeted, or revenue that came in above our assumptions goes to free cash.
Okay. And so that is the first money we spend?
Generally speaking, the way Holliston has always approached the fall town meeting is to determine where do put the free cash into the reserve funds that have been established.
Okay. So the stabilization fund is therefore what?
Rainy day fund.
Rainy day. Okay. Just had that conversation. The state was able to set aside money in their rainy day fund this year, which is shocking, given how, you know, everybody thought that the revenues were going to be terrible. How have our revenues been throughout this whole COVID thing?
We certainly saw some categories that were affected. The way that the federal government has looked at it is that we need to add all of our revenues together and look at the bottom line. And in terms of that, we did not see a decline in the bottom line of revenues mainly because of the fact that the building department has been churning out permits. We saw an incredible influx of projects come through the building department, which leads to revenue through that permit process.
It doesn't include the federal funds, however, does it?
It does not.
Okay. So those are in a parallel kind of process over here. Okay.
Towns that did see big drops in revenue were towns more likely to have hotels, restaurants, you know, things of tourism. That's not a big revenue generator, obviously not hotels, in the town of Holliston.
Yeah. One time to be grateful, I suppose.
Towns are allowed on meals tax.
Yeah, we aren't dependent on the meals tax. Yeah. Okay. And the pension stabilization fund, that's just, yeah, we established, this was for Middlesex Counties. It's the one that goes to Middlesex County Retirement.
So we're in the Middlesex County Retirement System for town employees, teachers that are applicable go into the middle, excuse me, the mass teachers retirement system. We established the fund at the May 2021 annual town meeting to address what is a liability that needs to be paid off in the next essentially 15 years, to be a little bit more aggressive, make sure that we have a plan in place. And so this is essentially the first time that we may be putting money into it at a town meeting.
Let me ask you a question about that kind of set aside, and also, I think it could apply to the OPEB and so forth. How do we decide how much of that to do? What percentage of whatever?
So every two years, we have actuarial reports done. We must do that by federal regulations in the way that we do, we close our books at the end of the year, our annual audit. So we pay an actuary to come in and set up funding schedules for both of those liabilities, OPEB and pension, right? It's, they're liabilities addressing benefits that are given to retirees. The pension one, we are legally obligated to fund the schedule. That's how the state is set up. OPEB, we are doing it as a best practice.
Okay. And are we on track with, well, this is the first time for this one. Are we on track with the OPEB?
Yes. OPEB, based on the previous schedule, and those financial policies are currently being reviewed by the Select Board and the Finance Committee, which is done every two years, is on the same schedule that had been previously established. But again, that's reviewed every two years.
Okay.
And in terms of being on track, 2037 is the goal that the financial team has set for the, to fully fund the pension stabilization fund and the OPEB fund. So the idea of being on track means funded by a certain date. Financial team has determined 2037 as the goal for being on track.
Is that what the, does the state set any kind of, you know, suggestion?
So there is, you are not allowed to have a funding schedule beyond 2040 for pension, and they have recommended everybody work their way towards 2035.
Okay. All right. Capital Expenditure Fund, we just, again, this will start with free cash. That will all start with the magic number of free cash.
Yeah. So on the capital expenditure fund, money did go in in the May annual town meeting, and then generally speaking, we evaluate where we are with free cash going into the fall and potentially make sure that that's in alignment with the policy. That is funding our capital project list essentially, which will go into Article 4, which is the spending. We did have a short list of just under $500,000 in projects in May. We generally tackle the larger projects in the fall timeline.
Okay. Let's talk about the capital budget in Article 4, which comes to almost 1.3 million. There are a couple of things in here that I think the public might be curious about. One would be the cameras on traffic signals. Is that exactly as it sounds?
Yes.
Cameras on all traffic signals?
No. Downtown traffic signals.
Downtown traffic.
It's the focus.
And the goal of that would be?
So we've heard from all of our public safety officials, actually over many cycles, right? This is not the first year that this request has been brought forward. And when we hear from our public safety officials, what we hear from them is it's response time and it's investigation support. So when something happens in the downtown area in terms of, say, a traffic accident or malfunctioning, anything, having the cameras there allows DP, highway, sorry, police and fire, and I suppose DPW through the communication lines they have set up to respond quickly as opposed to a resident picking up the phone and saying, hey, I think the lights are out downtown. They can monitor that and respond much more quickly. And then the other piece that we hear from our public safety officials on is the need to identify when there's been a crash or, you know, the rare circumstance where there's been a robbery or something more significant in terms of criminal activity, you can collect some information. I think it's important to point out what the cameras are not able to do, which is facial recognition. They are, I think the clarity or the ability to pick up an image is down to like a license plate and not beyond that.
Okay. All right. So, excuse me, is that a given? I mean, that's already been approved to be in this list. This will happen if it's passed a town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And the cameras will be on all of the downtown lights?
I have five in my head.
Yes. Washington Street corridor in the downtown area.
Okay. Okay. So talk to me about all of these things, just lightly and briefly, that we're basically talking trucks?
Yeah.
Police vehicles, ambulance, cars and trucks, cars and trucks, and cars and trucks.
Yeah. For the most part, I think you could classify this article, the capital budget, for larger infrastructure projects. Generally speaking, we'll put together a separate warrant article. These are many times related to equipment and smaller projects that you would see in our, in our five-year capital plan, which is available online and we'll link to as well in the document. You see more and more from the facilities side. Obviously, James Keast is the first facilities manager in town, and so he's put together quite a bit of projects in terms of planning of keeping our facilities in good standing. And so we had a few facilities projects in May. We have five on this list, a couple of town hall, 1750, and also the COA of projects that he's identified. And so that is a significant portion of this in terms of the number of projects. We have the three police vehicles. We do on an annual basis to upkeep that fleet. I think one of the highlights of this list that I would see is a response to what we've heard in terms of needing to improve our snow and ice response. And what we have here is what we've seen in some communities in our area, which is a, there is really no environmentally friendly way to be putting salt on the roads, but brine is one of the more environmentally friendly ways to do it. It's also a pre-treatment, so we do it before the storm. It's going to give us better response. I think this is going to really help our operations for snow and ice. At the same point, what I would make sure everybody at town meeting is aware of is that we are having a very difficult time sort of getting some of these things through the pipeline and procurement because of what's going on out there in the market, especially with vehicles. There's a chip shortage and those types of things. So there's a possibility that what we're doing is setting up a future improvement to our operations that hopefully can impact the snow and ice season that's upcoming, but if we're unable to receive it by that time, it may not.
Well, I do think that some of the items that Mr. Keast has come across are things that have been laying around for 15 and 20 and 25 years that have never been touched. So this is, at least in some measure, catch-up, right? It's not as if we're going out and doing new initiatives and adding new whatevers. So, okay. Okay. Transfer of funds to affect the tax rate, we can just, you know.
I don't anticipate action on that.
Okay. And the community preservation, I guess they don't have a report for us this time?
We will have the report in there. I believe they have a meeting scheduled at this time. I don't have anything in terms of expenditures. What we always do is have the article at the very least in there to show where the buckets of money are. Obviously, the CPC is broken into different funds, open space recreation. And so, you know, we show where the fund is, and if they don't have any expenditures, they can essentially give a report to town meeting.
Okay. All right. Now, number seven is critically important to those of us who are sitting here in the cable studio. This is just the legal funds for us to establish our new licenses. It's renewal time with Verizon and Comcast, and we go through this process, I guess it's every 10 years. It feels, it's about 10 years that it's.
Comcast is 10, and Verizon is five. So we just completed the Verizon, and this will be a 10-year agreement.
Yeah. So people should understand that there is, that this facility, this operation does not depend on town funds at all. This money comes from the cable companies, and it is their way of appreciation, if you will, for towns creating content for their stations and bringing local eyes to their stations and hopefully to buy their services. So at any rate, these funds, the $25,000 and so forth, is to allow us to engage in these contracts. Number eight, organizational evaluation of the fire department. I'm really interested in how we got to here. Why did this come up?
So Chief Cassidy, when he presents his budget, at least as long as I've been on the Select Board, he's presenting a level service funded budget, right? So he's not asking for increases because he's not looking for increases in service. So for, one way of looking at this is it's time. It's time to look at, is there a change in the service model? Complimentary to that is when we went through the last budget cycle, we did hear from, from the community on questions about the level of service that's being offered through the, both fire and EMS. And so the study gives us the opportunity to understand the structure currently, is it meeting the needs, and are there potential changes that the town would want to consider? And so this is an opportunity for us to dive in and see, are there beneficial changes for the community, for the department, to explore moving forward in future budgets and also in structure and organization of the, of the fire and ambulance department?
And these are organizational studies that are not uncommon. There's a few firms that do this work. The Collin Center is the one that, that town of Holliston has used in the past, but there's others, including a group called MRI, which is Municipal Resources Incorporated. There's firms that do this. They benchmark you. They tell you, you know, anywhere for operational improvements and those things. I think you'll read from the description that EMS is a substantial piece of this, right? There is a, there's a change in terms of the level of service that you can have as EMS is approved by the state, and some of those things have changed to the point where we need to be looking at it and determining if we want to go high or low in terms of our level of service as they've redefined it.
Let me stop you right there, okay? Just for a second. Emergency Management Service System, whatever, is EMS, right? So you're saying that somehow, somewhere beyond our borders, the state adjusted what the terms were for levels of service? Okay. Right now, what level of service do we provide? Are we like?
BLS?
Basic.
Basic life support.
Basic life support. And the maximum that we might offer is?
Advanced life support, ALS.
ALS.
Okay. And this study will diagnose whether we need one or the other, or is it more about these, both of these services would be, are acceptable, or these levels are acceptable, but in order to meet the ALS standards, you need to do this, this, and this. So it gives you a checklist, how you can go from basic to advanced, and perhaps some commensurate costs that go with that. Am I right?
I think that's certainly one component of it. I think there's other things that we can get out of it, which is including information of other options of models, right? Privatization, you know, working with other communities.
Mutual aid.
Regionalization, excuse me. So, you know, there are, there are other components that would come out of the study, but that is a major component that I think that this town needs, you know, as soon as possible. And so as Ms. Heine mentioned, when this came about, it was in a conversation going into the '22 budget. Chief Cassidy presents a budget of level service, but also, you know, puts in there some other things that he would be looking for if the funding was available. We did make some incremental changes in the FY '22 budget. One is to add additional inspection hours on the fire side to support him, which currently, you know, the fire inspections, which is a major role within that, that department, is being done by the chief, right? If we can get additional support there, that frees up some of his time elsewhere. That was a change being the '22 budget. And then on the EMS side, we had looked at, he had requested some additional administrative support in terms of scheduling and those types of things, which we've also pursued. Now, again, those are incremental changes, and then at the same point, we discussed, does it, does it behoove us to take a more holistic view of both of those service areas? And that's what this is doing.
Okay. So I recognize that people vent on Facebook and so forth, but obviously, one of the common comments on Facebook is about the ambulance time, response time. There was some question about salary levels, what we were paying these folks and that kind of stuff. Again, all of that will be taken into account within this study and comparables with communities of, you know, similar maybe size demand and so forth.
Yeah. My understanding is recruitment and retention will be an aspect of this study.
Okay. All right. Well, that will be, and how long will it be before that is finalized?
I believe the engagement, we would, we would look to have as quickly as possible so that we would have this information in time to at least have for the May annual town meeting. It may not be that we have the information in time for the fire and EMS budgets to be finalized for FY '23, but at the very least, I'd like the May annual town meeting to have this study back.
Article nine, the Phipps Tunnel restoration. Just as a point of reference for both of you, because actually, I don't think either of you was on, well, on board at the time. When we got the bridge, the Eight Arch Bridge designated as an endangered historic site, the tunnel was in there as well. We had, there were people at the preservation, Massachusetts Preservation, whatever. And we do have the letters, Robert and I have the letters, where they provided some feedback and input that might be useful to whomever goes ahead to do this. This is to establish basically whether it's structurally sound, I assume, and whether or not the current water and drainage and all that kind of stuff is damaging it to a, in a dangerous way.
I think it's worth pointing out, from the conversations I've had with the Rail Trail Committee, that the concern is, is less so the tunnel.
Right.
So that no one should fear going under the tunnel.
Right.
No one should be looking up or around and saying, oh.
Yeah.
Structurally, there's something going on here. That is not my understanding of the concern. Is it related to what the concern is? Sure, because they're integral structures. It's much more so the sort of embankments. There's a word for it. I'm blanking on what it is, but there's a word for the granite kind of siding or curving.
Abutments, maybe?
Abutments, thank you. That is the word. It's much more about those abutments and the hills on either side and holding back, and then how water is flowing off of those and into the drainage that then feeds down towards Lake Winthrop. So that's much more, as I understand it, again, the focus. Again, they connect with the Phipps Tunnel itself, and so there will be, I'm sure, some investigation of the tunnel, but it is not a concern primarily over the safety or stability of the tunnel itself.
That's the same thing that I remember us having conversation about when we were starting the Arches. That, and I used to own the property that is at the top of the hill, at least one piece of it. And I know that there's been a lot of diversion of the water up there from, from some of the homeowners up there.
Those who are on the trail often can, can see the changes, the degradation that's happened with the heavy rainstorms that we've had this summer and then previous big winter storms, so it's.
Yeah. Definitely something going on.
Yeah.
I think it's worth highlighting Phipps Tunnel, right? So obviously, a significant amount of volunteer work has been done to upkeep the trail, right? And there's just things that are going to be outside of the scope of what we can do through volunteer work. Phipps Tunnel is what?
Oh, yeah.
The Trail Committee has identified as a main concern. This is gaining information that's going to lead to a further project in the future, but we need this information before we're able to bring that, that project forward.
Absolutely. Well, it's just like what we did with the Eight Arch Bridge. I mean, we went and did the studies before we actually ever came to the town and said, you know, this is what it would take to fix. Okay. Makes sense. Okay. Nine Green Street. Nine Green Street is the white building that sits behind the Gulf, former Gulf Station, the brick building, and we own it. And what is the plan? I see we have a design. We're going to see if we can show that design.
So previously, town meeting appropriated the funds to demolish, demolish the existing building for all manner of safety concerns that have been previously identified. I would also point out that this Nine Green Street property sits adjacent to Goodwill and sits immediately in the downtown area. So when you factor in all of that, you, you start to turn to parking as the need is there and access to all of those great services and locations in the downtown area. The need is there for parking. When you start to look at, you know, what the site was previously used for, and, you know, not that this is about contamination, but that's a factor, the reuse becomes more limited. And so the Nine Green Street Committee that previously reviewed the information put forth a recommendation for a parking lot. Again, that's based on our licensed site provider and an understanding of the site itself. So here we are, talking about parking. And so the demolition costs have been appropriated by town meeting, and we're coming back to town meeting to ask them to consider an appropriation for the future reuse. So put that all together, we're asking for consideration of appropriation for a new parking lot. And what will be presented at town meeting along with Article nine will be the three proposals for what that could look like.
Okay. And so the one that we had on the screen a moment ago that looks like this, this is just one of them?
Correct.
There are three different, there are two others?
Sketch A, B, and C were presented from PAR Corp. Was, so there was, there's actually been two articles on Nine Green Street. December of 2020, special town meeting authorized a design and engineering for the demolition, the stormwater plan, and the site plan. And then at the May 2021 annual town meeting, the town meeting approved the demolition of the current structure, which we're having issues with. We, you know, kids climbing on the roof and those types of things, right? It's time for the building to come down. And then the next step is sort of the long-term strategy of what that is going to look like. The Nine Green Street Committee has weighed in on that, and PAR has provided essentially three sketches for consideration, which we'd like town meeting to weigh in on. So the article would look at this, pose it to town meeting, and then, as you'll see in the description from the comments of the Select Board, we are continuing to pursue state funding for it, but that doesn't mean that we don't want to put it in front of town meeting for review, approve the project with the understanding that if we do receive the funding through the state, that any funding we put aside for this now would just be turned back to the town.
Is the parking lot an impervious surface, or is it supposed to be asphalt?
So there's a couple of components to the design. One, as you can see from the design, there's quite a bit of green space.
Right.
There is a major stormwater component in this area that we're trying to address. So think about the lot. It's really, it adjoins a lot behind the Superrit, for example. And so there's a, there's a major stormwater component to the design. Beyond that, the area that you see is going to be a parking lot, so it's impervious surface. And then one of the other components that we've discussed with PAR, and again, many grant opportunities that we've looked at with the Sustainability Coordinator, would be to have potentially EV parking spots within that lot. That's going to draw more people to our downtown. People know the range that they have, they're electric vehicles, right? They, they look for those places. That then brings them potentially to our downtown, walking the Central Street corridor down to Blair Square and the rail trail. So there's a, there's a number of those types of economic development components to it as well, and that's.
I'd just add another compliment to this. One is the potential to significantly improve traffic flow in and out of the Superrit parking lot. That's to be determined, but that opportunity exists with this project. I think most would recognize that it's awkward and improvements.
It's treacherous.
Improvements would be, would be appreciated. So that opportunity exists with this reuse. And then the other opportunity that exists is to kind of, to definitely complement what's happening across the street at Goodwill Park. So when you look at the three options, A, B, and C, you'll find that all of them have a park-like appearance to them with furniture, I guess is what it's called, features that complement what's happening over at Goodwill. So picnic tables, places to, like a bike rack. There's even one of the choices has a chess table. So we're trying to sort of meld it into the neighborhood so that it's cohesive with the use of the park that's down there. And I will add that we have had a resident was on, a neighbor was on the Nine Green Street Committee, and we are in communication with the businesses and property owners down in that area, so.
Yeah. It's a tight area when people are, you know, parking on the street. I mean, the residents on Green Street must go bonkers, always have.
The last point I'd make out, make rather, is that one of the parking spots, one or two actually, or maybe even three, so we're looking at 15 to 20 additional parking spots in the downtown area. I'm going to say two or three of them will be ADA accessible, so a van could pull in there and have access to the street, which is missing in that area.
Agreed. Agreed. So Article 11 is water systems improvements, and I love this, looping of dead ends. Okay.
He's our water guy.
Looping, looping of dead ends. What does this mean?
So we had, again, in December 2020, the special town meeting that got delayed from October of 2020, two studies were authorized, which will lead to Article 11 and 12 and 13. Article 11 on the water system was a water modernization study, and the scope of that was obviously discussed at the town meeting when that was authorized. But there's a number of things that will be reported to the Select Board when Stantec presents their report on September 27th. And one of the items that we're aware of in the system, in any water system, this isn't Holliston specific, is you do not want dead ends in your system. It leads to stale water, at least to water quality issues. And so what you want to do when you find dead ends in your system is to loop them to keep continuous water flow. And so Stantec, while there will be a number of things in the scale and scope of what we put forward with the request for proposals that, that they responded to and got the, the put forward with the request for proposals that they responded to and got the work on, one of the things that they're going to address most likely as a priority is addressing some dead ends, generally speaking, closer to what is going to be the new water treatment plan coming online early next year, which is the well number five. So we have a couple of dead ends in that area. While the water modernization study, as presented to the Select Board, is going to lead to, you know, a long-term process of addressing our water system, what is most readily available for this October is going to be addressing some dead ends.
Okay, so we're talking about dead ends that are an integral part of the system that's over, that will affect well five, so Central Street area. Are there dead ends in other parts of town?
There are.
There are dead ends in other parts of town.
And so part of addressing, right, October is really the first Town Meeting since we have that report. And we did time the report so that we would have that information available for this Special Town Meeting. Now the Town Meeting moved up a week because of the date change from October 25th to the 18th. But I think that, you know, again, if this is the Stantec recommendation to the Select Board to move forward on this part, right, the next step leading into May and beyond is going to be planning what we want to do with the rest of the recommendations from Stantec that we asked them for. So it's really just step one, which we're all aware of, right? We have quite a bit of work to do with our water system. Sean Reese is doing a great job. We have a plan on the water mains, you know, we'll get feedback from Stantec on whether we're being aggressive enough, if we need to be more aggressive, how we would do that. But in terms of the short-term addressing, you know, the most immediate need, this is what we see Stantec recommending.
So if, in the process of doing, looping dead ends, is that work that would come out of the $75 fee that we already pay for installation of, you know, replacement of pipes in the, in the system? Or is that going to be work that will be budgeted over that?
The funding mechanism at the moment would be, in October, would be one of the two things. If, depending on the cost of the project, the Stantec presents it, which would be the basis of this article, we do have the infrastructure fee account. Generally speaking, that is designed to generate enough revenue to do a mile of pipe per year of water main replacement. The other funding source that all water systems have, generally speaking, is the same, we started off with a free cash conversation. The equivalent of that for a Water Enterprise Fund is called retained earnings. Now, we want to make sure that we have that balance because it protects the ratepayer. If anything happens outside of our control, we can control the rate and not have somebody affected, but it also can be used to do capital projects as needed. So we have a couple of opportunities there. And then in the long run, what the Select Board wants to do after we sort of are able to plan out everything from the Stantec report is to look at borrowing opportunities to do multiple projects and kickstart the process if needed.
Okay. All right, so that obviously closely marries with the question about sidewalks. But when we say sidewalk improvements here, we're spelling out very specifically ADA handicap access, compliance with the federal laws. Do we comply now?
No.
Do any of ours?
Yes, we are not 100%. We are nowhere near 100%. We do have some sidewalks and ramps that are ADA compliant, most notably in the newer areas where we've had recent projects completed. No, we are not 100% compliant. And in key areas downtown around the schools, we are not 100% compliant.
So is that what this is about?
In large part, yes. And I would just argue that we can separate sidewalk from water main. I think in the long-range planning, it makes a lot of sense to put the two together because we know there will be overlap. But not every sidewalk is tied to a project that involves a water main replacement or water infrastructure improvements. Many will, but what we're looking at here with this article are areas that don't have that connection.
Okay.
Connection being tied to.
Yeah, they're not linked to some other bigger activity. All right, so these, then these improvements would be, again, this is part of, is this part of the Stantec report as well, this whole conversation?
Separate engagements. So both articles were approved December 2020 by Town Meeting. We did choose the same consultant to do both, right? There's different engineering teams within Stantec doing these two reports. The sidewalk report had been presented to the Select Board, it's available online now. The water report is being presented to the Select Board on the 27th, then will be available online, and will be linked in the warrant document so everybody can see both of these reports. I won't attach them to the warrant because they're long reports, but for anybody who wants to get into the weeds on them, certainly that information will be available to any Town Meeting member or the general public if you're not attending. And so we'll have both of those. And so one of the other things, when the Stantec team that was doing the sidewalk report presented to the Select Board, at the end of that meeting, there was a couple of questions that the Select Board asked, one of which was, can you please make sure when the water team is coming in, doing that project, that you ask some of them these questions, right? The synergy between the two reports on some of the overlap mentioned by the Chair. So that's something that we anticipate will be answered and wrapped up on our conversation on the 27th. And then there were some other questions as well, which is, look, you know, clearly the Stantec report on sidewalk conditions highlighted the ADA compliance issue that we have in a couple of areas. That was a major component of what they found when they reviewed our current infrastructure. But at the same point, what the Select Board asked for, and one of the parts of the engagement that Town Meeting approved, was put together a plan of how to address, right, the next five years, 10 years. Some of that may include adding sidewalk to create better connectivity, some of it may be where do we need to be investing in our current infrastructure. And so that is one final component that we're expecting from Stantec before that report is finalized. It's in draft form and on the website now.
Wow, that's a lot of information to digest, you know, really, but it's great. I mean, this is stuff that's just been lying around, waiting to be done for so many years.
So these are long reports, Mary, but each one starts with a windshield or walking study. So any resident walking through our town can easily identify what the Stantec folks and others who've come into our community to study this see. So yes, it's complex, yes, the reports are lengthy, and there's a lot of information in them, but no, it's not complicated in the sense that when you walk the streets, use the crosswalks, anybody sees the issues that we have, and that's where each of these studies start, by doing that exact thing, and the issues pop up.
And they are consistent across the studies, I assume.
They are very consistent across the studies, and that's one thing.
That's good.
As we move into the crosswalk article, maybe I'll wait and hold my comments, but I think it's worth talking about the consistency.
Yeah, really. Okay, the crosswalks is next, crosswalk safety improvements. And sometimes, we have more crosswalks today than we did, so I mean, it seems we at least acknowledge that people try to cross the street in places other than downtown, right at the intersection. So this is going to address the absence of some, perhaps? No?
This article is designed to address existing.
Existing only, okay.
Yes, high use, areas that bring access to the downtown, areas that bring access to the schools, areas that bring access to the rail trail, areas that bring access to even, you know, Stoddard, well, not so much Stoddard, but Pleasure Point. So these are existing crosswalks.
What are we talking about with crosswalks, though? Crosswalk is a crosswalk, is a crosswalk? No?
So the Stantec study identified ramps that are not ADA compliant, so the sidewalks, excuse me, the crosswalks, we would be considering include those ramps that are not ADA compliant.
Okay.
So there's that.
If you can't get to the crosswalk, there's really no point.
The grade is too steep, the ramp itself is too narrow, there's no landing pad, so all of those. What's not so much identified in the Stantec report, but is well identified elsewhere, is the lack of pedestrian safety aspects. So the rapid rectangular flashing beacon, because Washington Street, many of our streets have high speed limits, and so, and they're long crosswalks, they're 30 to 40, in one case, 60 feet in length. So to step out into that, if you don't have good visibility, you're at a significant
Risk.
Risk. And you're a vulnerable user of the road at that point in time, you're not in a car. So these are crosswalks that need improvement for that purpose as well. And then there's a third piece, which is to say that they're known issues. We've had crash data that we can look at and identify that there have been safety concerns, people have been hit. And then the fourth piece is that residents are looking for this access, this safety improvement. So we hear from residents in multiple different forums reaching out to saying, we need these improvements. So a parent with a child wanting to walk to school, somebody who's wanting to be able to access the other side of a major road. So we have plenty of information. I don't think we focus enough on the prior reports and that wealth of resident comment, crash data, these are longstanding issues. And my fear is that as we focus too much perhaps going into Town Meeting on these Stantec studies, we're missing the bigger picture, which is, these are all known.
Yes.
And I fear that this creates a sense of rushing into a decision, and that's not the case at all. So I want to be clear, the lack of ADA accessibility, the safety concerns, they're longstanding issues. And Article 12 and Article 13, you know, they bring solutions, and there's just no justification for delaying.
Right, right. They've been sitting around for a long, long time, and we've had, I mean, truthfully, as someone who inventoried all of our old plans and so forth, I mean, all of this stuff has been regurgitated for years and years and years, so.
We are pursuing state funding as much as possible, right? So included in the studies that the Chair mentioned, right, we've been engaged with the Safe Roots to Schools program, which is overseen by Mass DOT, the Department of Transportation, as well as Complete Streets, which is a Mass DOT program, which has every two years, you know, we can go for $400,000 in funding, and we're aggressively pursuing that. We've pursued a number of opportunities. And so, but then one of the other things that comes out of some of these reports, whether it be Safe Roots to Schools, Complete Streets, our own Stantec report, some of the items that have been identified are not in our purview, they are state-owned, right, sidewalks of state-owned roads. And so that is then also incumbent on us, and Rep. Dykman and Senator Spolka's offices have been exceptionally helpful at putting us at the table with Mass DOT, to say that these are projects that we've identified through a program that is overseen by DOT, Complete Streets, a study that we commissioned, the Stantec report, that identify infrastructure that you own as the state that we need you to fix for our residents. So those are separate conversations that won't be necessarily seen in Town Meeting, but are ongoing as well.
Concord Street sidewalks.
The extent to which the town shows its commitment to address walkability.
This is very true.
To the extent that we demonstrate that through our own decisions, through Town Meeting and elsewhere, reinforces to.
To the state.
Yeah, exactly, that we are committed to this, and it only advances those causes further, so.
I can tell you, having reviewed grants for years and years, that one of the questions would be, what's the town done about this? Have they bellied up to the bar? Have they put their own money in it, or are they just sitting there with their hands out?
How much does the community care about this?
You know, if it's an issue just because you're chasing grants from us, stay home. We don't need it. We've got enough other requests. If you're here because you have a real plan, and you really have this as an important investment for yourself, we're happy to help. And, you know, the state does that at every single department, every single agency, and it's not a surprise.
Well, there's a responsibility to capitalize on any taxpayer dollar to match that, to go after great grant funding with it.
Absolutely, and mind you, the feds used to do the same kind of thing, I don't know whether they still do. All right, we are at, wow, 40 minutes already, so we're going to accelerate our pace here. Stormwater management, oh.
This is one that we've had, this is essentially the fourth year. So just so everybody understands, because I know I use acronyms a lot, MS4 is Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, is a permit that's overseen by DEP. And we are essentially in the first five years of keeping up with that. We're gaining a lot of information when it comes to our culverts, our outfalls, and then after five years, we're going to see the state begin to push on response to any stormwater issues that we have. When we have major storms, we see flooding, we're going to be seeing projects that address those. Right now, we're in the collection phase of information for the first five years under MS4.
That includes the stretch out on Washington Street that floods all the time?
Some of the issues will also be projects that we will be working with the state on, some of them are within our purview. Either way, what we're doing with this article, as we've done with the three years previously, is engaging with a consultant to do the engineering work that keeps us in compliance under MS4, and we're putting together annual reports that will lead to future addressing of stormwater issues.
Okay. Road acceptances at Highlands, this is the one on Route 126.
Correct.
Long-term coming, this is the Fafford Development, and those folks have had problems waiting to get, you know, for the buses to get up there, for the snow, for all of that kind of thing. So I think they're probably cheering in the streets. No pun intended.
So some good participation at the Select Board meeting for the public hearing on the 20th, the residents were there. This, I just want to make clear, is the Highland subdivision of Mohawk Path, Indian Circle, and Mayflower Landing. This is not Constitution Village. That one is in the future.
To be, to be determined. Okay, well, good luck to the half that made it. All right, let's, so that people understand when we're talking about marijuana zoning and the delivery of marijuana, since we don't do retail, how does this apply?
CCC continues.
That would be the cannabis.
Cannabis Control Commission continues to hear from concerns from the cannabis industry. One of the markets that's come out is related to delivery, so instead of a brick and mortar store of going to buy recreational retail, which is prohibited in Holliston, there are services now to deliver it to your house. We have considered delivery to be a component of recreational retail, and therefore it's prohibited in Holliston. What the CCC has recently done is essentially said, no, it's its own category. And so Holliston should respond with its interest in delivery. So the Planning Board will have its public hearing and an article, and Town Meeting will weigh in on its stance on delivery. Is it the same as recreational retail, and do we want to prohibit it as such? Or is it, you know, are we accepting of it? Essentially, will be the opportunity.
Is there any financial benefit to the town to accept it?
Potentially, if the model was that any delivery in Holliston generated revenue in Holliston, I think that some of the answers are not there in terms of how those things are going to work. It is modeled after Drizly, which is alcohol delivery, which again is relatively new in the state. But unlike the Uber, Lyft revenue that we now receive of any trip generated in Holliston, and revenue generated of that Holliston benefits from, you know, ride sharing that is, that is generated from town, the way that the delivery revenue model is going to work is still murky, in my opinion.
I would think so. I would think so. I mean, it's easy if you've got a retail unit and you know exactly, you know, how you're going to tax it, but for something is.
It's hazy.
Yeah, at the best, at the best. Okay, and establishment of a cannabis revenue stabilization fund, are we required to dedicate, set aside these proceeds?
So there's been some question in the past. Originally, the town's intention was to take the revenue generated from our host community agreements with our companies that do cultivation and manufacturing, right? They grow, and then they create products, but they don't sell them in Holliston. So we have agreements that lead to revenue for the town. Originally, the town's intention was to segregate those funds, and what the state said was, no, you know, these need to flow into your general fund. So they've been doing that for the last five years. Within that time period, the last five years, there have been new allowances, new local options that the town can consider. This would be to establish a fund to put all of that revenue into for a Town Meeting to later appropriate out of, for the purposes of addressing cannabis in the community, any services that we provide, right? So youth and family services, school programs, police programs, those types of things. And the fund would be set up to allow a future Town Meeting to appropriate for those types of projects or programs.
Got it. So we couldn't set it aside as a separate fund, but we've separated the pocket. We've got a little drawer over here that we're going to keep it separate and have Town Meeting appropriate.
Right.
Okay.
And so 17, 18, and 19 are really all that, the mechanism to do that.
Okay, and then 20 is a citizens petition, this one, I have a copy of it. I know that there were 306 folks that signed on to this. It is asking the school committee to halt adoption and implementation of race theory education programs, and also that to halt any additional staffing efforts in connection with any new race diversity and/or equity curriculum until a vote on adoption of said new curriculum is adopted through a special session Town Hall vote. That's all I know. That's all I know. It's, it will come, it says in your notes that, and I think I remember this even for the petition that I've been involved in in the past, the town council has to review these, right? If they're from the outside.
So we've scheduled, Jay Talaman will be with the Select Board on the 27th. There's some questions about the legality of it, generally speaking, addressing what the school committee does. There's, there are some components that a Town Meeting can vote on and affect, and there are some that they can't. So the Select Board will hear from Jay Talaman next week.
Well, that's interesting. I mean, if I think about it just from a process standpoint, the superintendent, not even the school committee, is the one that dictates the curriculum. So it's kind of, you know, maybe it's advisory, perhaps we should think of it as being advisory, but there's certainly binding, I don't know, from a legal standpoint, whether you could. But thankfully, you have a council that will come in and clarify that for you so that we don't run afoul of something. Always a good chance to do that. All right, guys, this is actually a far more interesting warrant than I anticipated. Oftentimes, the October warrants are pretty cut and dried, but this one's got some interesting conversations. I hope people pay attention. Is any of this available on Zoom this year?
Town Meeting?
Town Meeting?
No.
No? So this is back to normal, this is kind of, if I listened to the chief the other night, basically it sounded like it's just.
Entirely normal.
It's entirely normal.
With the exception, Mary, that because we're following school policy, we will be wearing masks inside, but in terms of social distancing and such, it will be a normal Town Meeting.
If I could just address the Zoom, because I have had questions about this, we are not eligible to do the meeting by Zoom to have people vote because we are an open Town Meeting, not a representative Town Meeting.
I know, I know. And that's, and I understand why, because I mean, there would be no way to accommodate the 10,000 voters or whatever, but still, it's just really so too bad. Anyway, all right, folks, thank you guys very much.